All right, good evening. I'm calling the meeting together. The Council Infrastructure Committee on June 21st, 2018, starting at 5:30 tonight rather than 6:30, we start in early tonight. And gone to order the meeting and we will start with Agenda Item AB 7621, Old Town Traffic Calming Funding Request. And I believe John has a presentation for us.
Let's see. Good evening. Let's see if I can play from the beginning. Hi, I'm John Mortensen, Senior Transportation Engineer with the City of Issaquah. Tonight I'm going to present about the Old Town Traffic Calming Project. Now that the pilot program has been completed, we are proposing permanent traffic calming for Old Town. So tonight I'm going to talk about our proposed layout that we're asking for review and approval and for the funding request to be able to install permanent traffic calming in Old Town. A little bit of history for the Old Town Traffic Calming Project. Traffic calming in Old Town began years before this current project and neighborhoods had lots of cut-through traffic and speeding throughout the years. An effort was made a number of years ago and the result of it was some no-left turn signs on Sunset and Second. And then last year with the 2017 Complete Streets Project, the city council authorized some money for neighborhood traffic calming in Old Town. And then that kicked off the process that was our pilot program. Last August, we had a public meeting where we presented some traffic counts that we had. We asked for input and ideas from the community, got all sorts of ideas, everything from toll booths to speed humps to traffic circles to restricting the neighborhood to people who live there only. Out of that, we designed a pilot program, which I'll talk some more about, and implemented the pilot program. A month ago, we presented the results from the pilot program. Going into detail on the pilot project that we did, we experimented by installing a variety of devices throughout Old Town. The devices were speed humps, speed cushions, which is what you see in this picture, speed tables, traffic circles, and chicanes. The devices were installed last winter, late January, early February. Before the devices were installed, we collected traffic data to see what the speeds and traffic counts were. After the devices were installed, we continued collecting data. Throughout the whole process, we had a survey at Peak Democracy where we got a lot of great feedback from the community. And one thing that we did as an experiment during the pilot program is we tested the effectiveness of the no-left turn signs that were installed a number of years ago. And halfway through the program, we begged the signs and allowed people to take left turns into their neighborhood to see the impact of those signs. This picture shows the pilot project layout. I'm not going to spend too much time on it because I think most people who are here are familiar with it. And so out of the pilot project, some of the things that we got is the public wanted more devices. Of all the devices that we installed, speed humps were the preferred device that people felt like they were the most effective, that they wanted to see in their neighborhood. We got a lot of negative feedback on the chicanes, which I'll briefly touch on in a few slides. And the traffic data showed that traffic calming works in Old Town. It showed that it does reduce cut-through traffic and speed. We learned that device spacing is pretty important and that played a role in our final layout. And my opinion, the data showed that the no-left turn signs were ineffective.
Ineffective?
Ineffective, they were not effective. Basically, the traffic volumes didn't change after they were covered. The distribution changed a little bit where more people were turning left, as you would expect, so you'd see more northbound traffic on Sixth and Fourth. And we saw a reduction of traffic heading east on Andrews and Bush. So I mentioned the chicanes. Yes, sorry.
Thank you. I had a question about when you said the left turns. Can you... No-left turn signs when you said the... The signs that say no-left turn, they were not effective. Are you... Did you find that just having the left turn signs were not effective? People were cutting through the neighborhoods anyway. But did you find that the traffic calming had an effect that the left turn signs, we had hoped they would have an effect, but didn't? Is that what you're trying to say?
What I'm saying is the data showed that we did not see an increase in cut-through traffic after the signs were covered. And whether that's because the devices were discouraging people or people were just ignoring the signs, that I don't know.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So the chicanes, which is the picture right there, we found out that based on the feedback from the residents that we don't recommend them for Old Town. People felt like the chicanes caused a lot of... We got a lot of comments about how it was an impact on parking, that people had a fear of head-on collisions, and that people were treating it like a slalom course. The chicanes did reduce speed, however, based on the feedback that we've got, we don't recommend chicanes for Old Town. So we're in the process of getting those removed and replaced with temporary speed humps, and that work is scheduled to take place on Monday and Tuesday of next week. For the traffic calming, the permanent traffic calming layout that we are proposing, it's based on the pilot design. We didn't want to start from scratch, that we felt like the pilot program was working. However, based on the data, we felt like we did need to add some additional devices, which have been added to it. Rather than using a variety of devices, for the most part, we went with speed humps. We do have one traffic circle that we are proposing in it. During the pilot program, we saw that there's a small number of cars that travel fast through the alleys, and we considered different alternatives. And based on the data, we're recommending not installing permanent traffic calming devices in the alleys and instead to work with the neighborhood to address the speed in the alleys. We would encourage residents to talk to each other. If you see someone speeding there, talk to the person who's speeding. If you write down a license plate, we can have the Issaquah Police Department talk to the person. But the data showed it was just a handful of residents... A handful of drivers that were speeding. It wasn't very many per day. And there was no change in the number of speeding vehicles when school was out, so we don't think it's cut-through traffic trying to get to school. That's our recommendation for the alleys. Another thing that... Yes?
So if you say like you said that speeding in the alleys will not be addressed with physical traffic calming devices because the speeding is by a handful of drivers. So to me, that doesn't really make any sense because it doesn't matter whether it's five or 100. It seems like it would slow, no matter what the number is, it seems like it would slow any number of drivers through the alley. So can you explain that?
So let me... Sure, courtesy of my transportation manager. Just backing up a minute to what we're trying to accomplish in Old Town with our traffic calming program. It's always been our goal to reduce both the number of cut-through trips and the speeds of travel on the roads. And with the focus being on what we've heard and what our data supports is there's a number of cut-through trips driving through Old Town at speeds faster than they should be driving. There's nothing in anything that we learned in Old Town that would suggest that alley speeds are cut-through trips. There are, as John mentioned, a handful of speeds that are higher than we'd like to see in the alleys. Ironically, the alley speed we understand is the same as most streets, which is 25 miles an hour, which is another issue that we might want to look at. So you could be driving at the speed limit in the alleys, and that's probably faster than you should drive. So just as a sidelight. But as John mentioned, at this point, the most effective way to address that handful of drivers is us working with the neighborhood and the police department. It's not really effective or I don't think a good use of city funds to start putting traffic calming devices in the alleys. We're really trying to focus on the, as I mentioned, the cut-through trips and the speeds of people that really aren't... Shouldn't be in that neighborhood using those neighborhood streets for cut-through.
Okay, so then it's not clear, I think what you're saying is that it's not that some sort of traffic calming in the alleys wouldn't slow the people who are speeding in the alleys, but it doesn't do anything to calm the traffic on the streets where we're trying to calm the traffic? That's really the point I think you're trying to make?
That's correct. Yes, that's accurate.
Okay. So I just don't think it's clearly written in here about why it's ineffective in alleys. It's ineffective because it doesn't solve... Help solve the problem we're trying to solve. That's...
Right, the cut-through trips, yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. One of the things that...
I have a related question. About the handful of drivers, I'm interested to know how you actually know that it is a handful of drivers, meaning I read that to mean the same individuals that are doing this. Do you have information about how many individuals?
Yeah. So I went through and looked at the data. I chose a time period from February 10th through February 21st. And I just looked to see westbound and eastbound, how many people were driving between 25 and 30 miles an hour, and same thing for both east and westbound, and how many people were driving more than 30 miles an hour, that I just put that all in one category. And well, I didn't go through and average it. It looks like it was about 10 cars each direction who were going more than 25 miles an hour. And we're getting about 60 cars a day on the alleys.
Okay. But you didn't have license plates or the information about the vehicles?
No. So one of the things that we did find when we collected all the data was the cut-through traffic was reduced after the traffic signal at Second and Sunset was installed. And as we look at how we're trying to reduce cut-through traffic, and this is more of a long-term thing that I just wanted to briefly talk about, that making sure that we do a good job of managing the traffic on our main streets, the arterials where we get more traffic, that that's a very important factor too in reducing cut-through traffic through neighborhoods is to control congestion because that really had a big impact. And as I mentioned, the data showed that the no-left turn signs were ineffective, and so it is our recommendation that those signs be permanently removed. Up on this slide is the permanent traffic calming layout that we are proposing. And so we've got the speed humps in purple, and then we've got the traffic circle at the intersection of Andrews and Fifth. I'm going to move on to this slide because it's still the same thing. It's the proposed layout. The devices that are circled in the dark blue, those are the additional devices that we added from the pilot program. The devices that are circled in red, those are the ones where we made a major change. I didn't highlight the ones where we went from a speed table to a speed hump. I figured that was more of a minor change in device. But the red ones, we took one of the traffic circles and we're proposing it to be a...
Point to one road and say what the name of the road is, just so I get it right.
Let's see here. Is there a pointer?
The mouse.
Oh, the mouse, okay. Yeah. So here's Bush. And so right here, this speed hump was a traffic circle in the pilot program, and we're recommending a speed hump because we don't get a lot of traffic on the north-south alley that it intersects. And this is near the chicanes, so we're recommending that a speed hump be installed near where the chicanes are. And we've moved it a little bit to the east so that way it's mid-block. And then here in dark blue on Sixth, one of the comments that we frequently got is people were driving over this speed hump, and then they were speeding up, and that we should do a device here. And the traffic data also showed that people were going faster here than what we would have liked. And we're proposing one right here on Sixth. That way, if you're on Sunset, you can see, if you're wanting to cut through to the north, you can see that this is a traffic calm neighborhood. And right here between Second and Third is another one that we recommended adding. And right here at Fourth, one of the comments that we got a lot was people, when the traffic signal's backed up, whether it's people turning on Fourth and heading to Andrews or from Second over this way, and we wanted to try and calm people who are trying to avoid the intersection of Second and Sunset by heading from Andrews to Fourth. The next steps, if the layout and funding request for traffic calming is approved, we will finalize the design details, hire a contractor to install permanent traffic calming, and get the permanent traffic calming installed. Are there any comments or questions?
So I had a number of questions. The first one is about the chicanes. I think they're still there currently, but they will be... Says it will be taken out in July, I think. And it said the chicanes on Andrews, we remove and replace with a temporary speed hump in July. So I wondered why that is a temporary one when everything else is switching to permanent? Is it going to switch to a temporary and then to a permanent?
Yes, it will first be temporary and then become permanent. And the reason for that is we do not have council authorization to install permanent traffic calming, and we felt like this is something that needed to be addressed sooner rather than later. And there's been an update since the original schedule where we thought it'd take place in July. We were able to get the material sooner, so it's scheduled for Monday and Tuesday of next week.
Okay.
And just to follow up on that, we heard from the community clearly, as John mentioned, that the chicane is not a popular device in Old Town. So we... Recognizing that, and now that we have a replacement for it and that we can do that right away, our goal would be to do it right away. And you're right, it would... In a perfect world, we would come back and install a permanent device, but for all the reasons that John listed, by the time we complete the design, hire a contractor and do that permanent work, that's likely to be several months from now, likely to be this fall, late summer, early fall, so we can do the chicane work, removal, and temporary installation next week, we believe.
Then in the cost matrix, which is on page 10, there's some traffic items that I just... I was unclear what there... Or some items that I was unclear on what they are. So the minor change in the mobilization, what do those refer to?
Yeah, so the minor change is just small, little changes, like if we needed to install a plant or a catch basin, to be able to pay the contractor time and material for that work. The mobilization, that's the pre-construction expenses that the contractor will have to prepare to do the work and to move equipment onto the job site.
Okay. So that would be for any... That would be sort of for any of this type of construction work?
Yes.
Okay. And then the traffic circles that are out there right now do not look like the traffic circle that you showed on an earlier slide. And so I wondered what is the plan for the actual traffic circle? How is it going to look in terms of the curbs and the landscaping or the center circle?
So the details of the design have not been worked out. We have been looking at a number of options. And so I will go here, and we have some pictures to show you of different options of things that we might be able to do. One of the options is we could do colored stamped concrete in the middle, like this traffic circle. And low drought landscaping, where you can partner with the neighborhood to maintain the landscaping. And that's something you see a lot in Seattle, and I believe that's where this picture's from. Another option, I couldn't find any other examples other than ours, is just put asphalt in it. Not the best looking, in my opinion.
Dr. Seuss hat design.
Yes, it would not have a Dr. Seuss hat. And another option is to put artwork, and this is an example of artwork with landscaping, that would be something that we could do inside the center of it.
And just to add to the landscaping portion, what other communities have done that we... This is new for us. We haven't worked so closely with the community on a traffic calming program before, but one... Many communities partner with the community on the landscaping element, so... Meaning that the city would install the traffic circle, we would set it up the inside for landscaping, probably not irrigate it because that adds a lot to the expense. Assuming we had some commitment and some stewards of the circle that were committed to maintaining the landscaping, that has worked well in other communities. So that's not a for sure, but it's an option that seems attractive to us, and we want to pursue that as we move forward with the design and construction of this circle.
Okay. And then my last question is about these temporary devices. My understanding is that they can be moved and reused somewhere else, and I wanted to know what's the plan for next steps. I know there are a bunch of other neighborhoods and a bunch of other areas in the city that are interested in traffic calming. And then sort of related to that, are there any devices that are for crosswalk safety, which is another thing that it seems like it would be nice to have some pilots about pilot devices to improve crosswalk safety?
So let me take those questions one at a time. First of all, short answer to your first question on the traffic calming devices is yes. It's been our intention all along to... In purchasing these speed humps, that we would be able to use them as appropriate in other parts of the city. One of our work elements, items this year is to develop a... Is to revise our traffic calming program and make it more current with current practices and also reflect these pilot programs that we've been doing. So I think there is likely to be opportunities to use these devices in other traffic calming places in the city. We just don't have that yet. And our preference is to complete, develop this traffic calming overall program, and then these pilot programs would be a part of that potentially, so.
So a citywide?
So the traffic calming program, we current to... So to be clear, we currently have a traffic calming program. It's... I think it dates from the early 2000s. So we're wanting to revamp that and make, as I said, make it more in line with current practice. And also, again, to reflect what we think works well for our community or these pilot programs. So it's likely that we would have an opportunity to use these pilot devices in other areas of Issaquah. And to your second question, a little different answer on that one. We are... We know that we need to revise our crosswalk guidelines, and that is another work plan, work project for this year. So we're taking... We're planning to take a really close look at our crosswalk guidelines to make sure that they're all exactly what we want them to be. That's a second half of this year program. Crosswalks are different in the pilot aspect because we really... Pilot, in my mind, implies we're going to try some things, and we really want to be very careful and deliberate on how we treat crosswalks. We really don't want to get out there and try experimental-type things on crosswalks. So crosswalks would typically, after they were evaluated and after they were compared against crosswalk guidelines, then we would make any changes to crosswalks based on those guidelines and not typically as a pilot.
Do you have a comment? Question?
Maybe, do you?
Sorry. Yeah, I just... I have one thing on the word "permanent" keeps being used. And to me, that assumes a whole lot of stuff here, and I don't think we quite mean permanent in the forever now, but that they would be installed with asphalt and so that they would be stable, not rubber attached to the wood, to the asphalt by bolts and so forth. So they would be fairly long-term, but not necessarily forever in a day, and nothing will ever change from here on out, right?
Correct. Yeah, you can always grind out the asphalt and repave it.
And if something else happened, then we could... You know, things happen in the future, things change. Permanent isn't the end of the discussion forever and ever, right?
So another way to say that is we're here and we're... We think we've gotten a good start, developed relationship with the residents of Old Town, and this being the result of that work, but this isn't the end of that. We're not abandoning Old Town. Once the... Once these permanent devices are installed, there's still... We know we still need to be aware of the alley speeding issues, and as other things come up in Old Town, we're not going anywhere. We're here and we'll continue to listen to the Old Town community. But they are permanent in the sense that the temporary ones, as you mentioned, Mr. Ramos, were bolted down. These are permanent devices. They're asphalt. And our plan, as John explained, is to put the right devices in the right locations and go with that for now.
Thank you.
I have one question. I'm excited to hear... I'm sure we have some folks here who are going to talk about this agenda bill, and I'm super anxious to hear what they have to say. On page two of the agenda bill, it talks about the funding coming from the School Zone Safety Fund. And it said, "This fund is recommended because it is to be used for transportation, mobility, and traffic safety-related capital improvements as identified in the ADA program and the Capital Improvement Plan. This project is intended to improve safety near schools." And it has... That fund has about $1.26 million in it. That fund is... It's not explained in here what that fund is. I believe that fund is the monies that are coming in from the traffic camera on Second Avenue.
That is correct.
And we actually have a policy about how that fund is supposed to be, is we have criteria, right?
The bullets that were in the policy document that the council adopted is where that language was pulled from.
I would like to have seen, and I probably still... I'm still going to ask to see the complete language because it looks like a little bit of it was cut and pasted. And then I think what I would like to see, particularly in the future, when we have policies and we are trying to... Trying to make a case to us that this is the appropriate thing to do, we should reason why it's appropriate for that fund to be used for this purpose. It's not in front of a school. This area's not in front of a school. And so one could say, hmm, how is this... You know, how is this should be spent from the School Zone Safety Fund? So I'm not signaling anything about anything except that I think this information here is incomplete about why it's appropriate to use that fund for the money.
Thank you for that. Anything else? Nothing? If not, I think we have some public comment coming now. So those five of you here, I'll probably want to say something, so please take your turn and go to the microphone up there and give us your comments.
Well, as you know, Jenny Bingham, 375 Southeast Andrews Street. And as you would know, I would show up. We began working with Kurt at the beginning of this, and then most of the communication with John now, and I'm sure he goes in through Kurt as well. So I just want to say, here I am, 17 years later, trying to get the city to stop the cut-through traffic, and it seems like we're now on a permanent solution going forward. In 2001, the interchange was built so that I-90 traffic could exit onto Sunset Way going east and up to the Highlands. In 2005, there were several of us, including Gail Given, began talking with the city about the cut-through traffic in our neighborhood. And the city installed the no-left-hand turn lanes. And at that time... And at that time, we could call a policeman, and they would come, which deterred more people from turning. We could call, they would come, and they would issue tickets. And periodically, we didn't call, and they would hide, not hide, but be present, and issue tickets, sometimes warnings, sometimes tickets. After a while, we'd call, and then we'd talk to the city, one traffic policeman, and that still continues. So, going forward, I don't know how we're going to do this with the alleys. So, and at that time, the only reason we got that, even working with the traffic calming program that was there at the time, we were told that all we could get was the no left-hand turn lanes, there was no more funding. So, here it is, 2018, 10 years later. Studies have been done, and temporary traffic calming implements have been installed. Now, we're in the process of permanent traffic calming implements being placed. We have spoken some of our issues, and it seems with what we've come up of, we've not been heard on Andrews Street. So, we go to the drawing, and I question why, if Andrews is the first street off of Sunset Way, taking a left-hand turn, why we only have two traffic calming implements coming up? We have four coming up, permanent, on Bush, and three on Alder. I question that. I have said in many, many meetings here, and to John, to Kurt, that from the traffic circle, they speed down to what is now the chicane, which will be a speed bump a little bit more. Because they blow the stop sign at Fourth Avenue, they just blow the stop sign, they come around that corner, and if there's somebody coming at a high speed from Fifth, it's almost a near miss. We've seen many, or several, near misses. And because there is no sidewalk at, from 360 down to Fourth Avenue, many people will go out on the street there because it's grass and icky gravel and mud puddles and everything else, so they'll go out to the street. I've seen near misses with people. We have asked, several of us asked, maybe there's some people that don't want it here, but why can't we have one right after the turn, Fourth Avenue, heading east? Two for Andrews Street is just, I question that, I want to know why, and why we haven't been heard. So, going forward, I would like a question, an answer on that. By taking the, by taking the no left-hand turn lanes that we fought hard to get, I feel that the city is giving us some traffic calming, but still inviting the public to cut through our Old Town community, making it not safe, not pleasant, loud. We have children, we have children, and now we've got alleys, and John says he determines that the alleys only had 10 people. Well, he only took counts and strips on the alley between Alder and Sunset. He did not take and put any strips down between Sunset and Andrews, or Andrews and Bush. And the alley I see and hear all the time is the one between Bush and Andrews. High rate of speed, many cars, there are no counts, John. So, we can't use one alley to determine we don't need. There's not even a speed limit sign, and we're going to go out and police these people? I'll tell you, some of the character to come down there, zooming in their trucks and music and rower, and I'm not going to go out, nor I do, I'm just amazed the city would think that we should go out and talk to these people? No way. That's a safety concern, too. And there are many children that play in the alley between Al, Bush and Andrews, so as long as there is more building in Issaquah, the numbers will extremely multiply. So, if you take 200 cars a day, 17 years of, of it to get up to 200 is, you take, take that, and that's 20 cars a year that a person is realizing they can go down our streets. More building, more people. You allow them, they'll come. So, going forward, I and others ask, what your solution will be for our alleys? No speed limit signs, and you want us to police them? Just what is it we can legally do as citizens? I had said before, I'm going to lay down some two-by-fours or something like that, and Mary Lou kind of chuckled, you know, I can't do that, because then I'd be liable. But these people aren't held liable for speeds, so police won't come in the streets now unless there's an accident. Why would they come for our alleys? I'd like to see the speeds and count strips installed on Second Avenue and also Sunset Way, up to the stop site, and a website set up so we can see the daily speeds and counts on those streets. We have three schools, a transportation department, now two sports fields. People coming east or west, where do you think they're going to go? They're not going to pick a bump, maybe, but then they're going to pick the alleys, and there's no solution for that. So, if we can't get money from the $1.26 million that's there up the traffic light, I ask the city to find more than $300,000. I do not believe we need, I did suggest to John, because there's some people on Fourth that would like to see a speed bump there, but that's not as important for the speed and the safety of people on Andrews Street. Take, if all you can afford is take that speed bump that's on Fourth and move it around to a little bit after Fourth, heading east. Please, think of our safety and our community. I've said, missing sidewalks, no crosswalks, I do not understand, especially on the roundabout. You've got four different ways, there's kids walking to school on a roundabout. Can't you just paint a temporary white crosswalk on all fours? How hard is it? I'll get down there with, and do it, for the safety of my community and the children and the elderly and wheelchair people, I'll do it. I'll donate my time, but, anyway, thank you.
Can I ask her a question?
You don't want to do it?
No, I wanted to repeat something, I didn't hear what she said.
Okay.
Jenny? Jenny? Can I ask you to repeat something you said? Can you go back up there?
Oh, sure.
Didn't get it written down, so you're suggesting a second speed hump on Andrews? Where?
Well...
Just point.
So, so if...
You can't talk, you can't talk up there, but if you just point.
If they can't afford...
No, if they could afford, where would you want?
If they could afford, because they blow the stop sign at Fourth all the time, because they're speeding down Fourth and zooming around the corner. There's a big, in the gravel there, there's a great big hole, because they're speeding.
Jenny, can you use the mouse? Oh. Just point to where you would put another speed hump, please.
Yeah, if I can see it, okay. So, here's the one on Fourth, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, I don't care, this, this bump can be moved down where the one on...
Okay.
Okay? And then...
So, you're suggesting two between Fourth and Second?
Correct.
Right.
Just like it is on Bush Street.
I just wanted, I just didn't hear that part, I was writing something down.
And perhaps, I don't know how these people feel down here, I don't know the concern there, I just know it gets high speed after this roundabout as well. And, and speaking of the roundabout, I'm hoping that you put cement on each side, because people are just pulling up to, and they want to take a left, they just go, "Pew!" So, I don't know how that's done on a small street like that, but pretty much everybody is not using, not everybody, but...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
I'm Gail Given, living at 360 Southeast Andrews.
I still call it the Southeast Andrews Bypass. First of all, I'd like to say that having this meeting at 5:30, I think, cut out a lot of people that might have liked to show up because they're still at work or on their way home. And Jenny pretty much said everything that we've all been talking about in the neighborhood, she's covered a lot of it. I just wanted to reiterate, as far as people building up speed when they turn into the neighborhood, I watch every day, I'm gardening, and I look every time somebody comes into the neighborhood, car after car after car. It's much worse in the summer, for some reason, I guess people are hot and bothered, and they don't want to wait, but they do cut in at Fifth, and when you turn right at the traffic circle there, there is no impediment to you speeding around the corner. It's very easy to just turn as fast as you want to go. And so, when they turn there, they're building up speed, not just from turning in at Fourth, but farther down, and by the time they get halfway down, they're going 50 miles per hour. I see them every day, and it's obvious how fast they're going. And so, I agree, I reiterate that we need another speed hump, just where Jenny said, just past Fourth, because you need to slow down the people that are coming from Fifth, not just from Fourth, but from Fifth as well. I'm wondering also, since you're putting in these speed humps and they're not, I don't know if I understood correctly, but they're, they're not going to be permanent at First? Is that, am I misunderstanding? So, they, so when you do the permanent, the permanent calming, they will be the asphalt ones? Okay. So, I want to ask that question. And one more question I have is, is there some reason why speed limit signs could not be posted in the neighborhood, just as a reminder to people? Of course, they should know what the speed limit is, but if they see it in front of them after they zip around the corner, maybe that would make a difference? And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail.
Hello, I'm Kathy Harrison. I am on Sixth Avenue, 146th Avenue, and I've only been around for nine or 10 years, so thank you for all your neighborhood efforts on this, and thank you guys for what you're doing. I'm happy because what I was seeing a lot was that second hump needed there. People just, people have come around that corner and into the person's yard, you know, that, that corner is not slowing people down as much as I would expect that it would. So, anyway, that is working great, I think it's going to be awesome. I don't really, I don't have any really questions. The left-hand turn, you guys have been around it more than me, I felt like people ignored it anyway, so I don't care that people are coming through the neighborhood as much as the speed really was getting me, it was so dangerous, so, especially my experience on Sixth, so, I don't know, I just want to say thank you, because I don't have other concerns at this point, but it's great to hear you guys on, on the different roads. I used to be on Southeast Andrews on the dead end, so I missed everything, and I just moved to Sixth, then it was a nightmare. I was like, why did I do this? But, so, thank you, I haven't been dealing with this for so long, so, anyway, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
I'm Mary Lynch, and I'd just like to make a couple of comments and observations. One about the, you know, some of the alley counts, the dates it's overtaken, that is a holiday, and the school was out of school for three of those days. So, not only do you have a miscount because of the student cut-through traffics, the parent cut-through traffics, but also, in general, when there's a winter break, a spring break, half the commuter traffic is gone from the city, for any of you that live here and, and experienced that. Also, that said, I do travel second and to Sunset, both during the commute for the schools, and you've got Issaquah Middle, you've got Issaquah High, and you have Clark. And there is a lot in the morning and afternoons, a lot of cut-through for parents and students on both of those streets, both sides of those streets. And one of the ways you can tell it is, those students and people that park on campus are required to carry a sticker. Now, there's also a lot of cars that are coming out of those side streets or turning in those side streets that don't have a sticker, because those are all the students, the juniors and seniors that didn't get a parking pass. So, they're parking in the Old Town area and in the community center right now, and then walking, but they're still cutting through. And I know that, again, because I do drive a school bus, and we are forever having, from those side streets, seeing the cars that are, turn and cut through in the afternoon, and we'll see them in each one of these streets, and they, they beat us, more than not, even with the new stoplight, to those places, which means they have to be speeding. Because even when I have a green light and can turn, I do in 25 miles an hour or less, they beat us to those streets and then are trying to pull out in front of us, and they will pull out in front of us continually. And in the evening, when I come back, you can see the people that are getting off of I-90, and I do, and glad that we put the flashing yellow light there, because that does slow people down, it really should be back further, because you have people coming down Highlands at 40 miles an hour, and they are still doing 40 miles an hour when they come to that sign. And I've mentioned it before, I was told that you can have a device that goes onto those signs, where you can click and count the number of cars that are above the speed limit. And I would really encourage you, that is one to have. So, you routinely get who is speeding. They also do just the reverse, is, once they get past the, the sign here, the 25 miles an hour flashing, they're speeding up the hill, and it's only 25, but they're speeding up, and a lot of them are already up to 40, and if they get the green light, they're up to 50 going up the Highlands, or onto I-90. And I drive it every day, I see it, there is cut-through traffic, and as Jenny said, if there's not a police there on a routine basis, those signs did not work, so they were ineffective. But, when, you know, four, five years ago, they were effective, because we had some police that would, you know, periodically show up, and so people didn't turn there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Does that conclude comments, or you want more? Okay.
My name is Gail Paladinos, and I live at 290 Andrews Street. My house is directly in front of, in back of the chicane, and I'm happy to hear that it is being removed and replaced with a temporary hump. But I also would agree that we do need two speed bumps on, either speed humps or bumps, humps on Andrews. And my question is, why is the positioning of the speed hump that will be put in, in the middle of the block, and not similar to the one that's on Bush Street that's closer to Second Street, where it's really needed? And I believe that it would be beneficial if we had the second one up towards Fourth Street, which would actually slow the traffic down. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Give everybody a shot, are we good? I think, great, thank you. All right, discussion.
I have some more questions, based on the, based on some comments we heard. So, first question is about the single speed hump on Andrews. Do you want to explain why that's proposed? Just one, not two? It does stand out, it's, I noticed it. It does stand out, as I noticed it as well.
So we, the data that we saw showed that what we had was effective in reducing speed on Andrews. And so we felt like having the one there was going to be enough. And we also felt like with the addition of the one on Fourth, that the combination of those two, that that was a good spacing for the devices in order to keep the speeds down and to keep control of the cut-through traffic.
So were there strip, cap traffic count, speed strips between the, so the comments, so comments were made about how you could speed between the hump or the chicane, I think at the time, to the circle that's proposed. Was there a counter or a speed tape in there to see whether people were speeding up between those two?
We had a counter on Andrews that was, I'll probably have to look to the residents for the exact location.
It was right before the chicane, so no, we asked for a speed cable to be put at Fourth to prove that we had a speed problem, and you put it down by the chicane. I emailed you and asked you, please move it, and you didn't move it. Because I wanted something to show that the speeds were up at Fourth. It was, what, maybe 20 feet before the chicane?
You're not, not mic'd. The public can't hear.
Okay, so.
So you asked the residents, and one resident said that the speed counter, or this whatever tape, was closer to Second, and there wasn't anything further west, or further east?
Correct.
To, to record whether drivers were speeding once they get past the chicane? That's what her response was?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
And what does one speed hump cost?
So I'm guessing when you add up the total cost, that an extra speed hump would be about $10,000.
Okay. And Sheldon, you'll recall that when we had the traffic calming, or the discussions in the Highlands about that neighborhood, once the data was collected, there was information, there was some raw data that was available. You have that available for the neighborhood? I don't think I've seen it. If I have, I don't recall, I haven't seen it.
Yeah, so I do have the raw data. I've got a summary of it here tonight, and if people want more data, we've got all the data that anyone would like to look at.
Is it in those sheets that shows the daily and the number of cars in between?
We can produce those sheets for those that want them.
Okay, I'd like to see that, please. And then my, I think my last question is, you've got the addition of the speed hump on Sixth Avenue as drivers are headed west and want to take a quick right onto Sixth, the new one, the new speed hump there?
Yes.
So I'm familiar with it because I work in that building right there, and so I get to witness people going "eh" around the corner all the time. And so my question about that is, and comment, is I question whether that's the right place to put that speed hump. I'm not opposed to putting a speed hump there, but the distance between, there's, that's an interesting corner, because you've got that parking, the right-of-way there that people park in. And then as you head around that soft corner, you don't, you know, you don't have to lay on your brake very hard before you can just zoom around that corner, and you don't have to give up a lot of speed. You can be going pretty fast. I think that's the point of you putting that there, right? Because you're telling people you're entering a neighborhood that's got traffic calming, immediately slows them down, maybe deters them from going in there. But there's a very short distance between the driveway of the building that I'm in and the actual street. I'm not sure there's enough space to put something in there and have it not be people slamming on their brakes as they notice that there's a speed hump there. So my comment is, I just, maybe you've studied it, and I'm, doesn't matter what I say, because you've already studied it, but I would be, just looking at it, seems like maybe that's not quite the right place, that maybe it needs to be between the two driveways on the right. Maybe it doesn't capture people the second they come in. I, I don't know. That's just my observation.
Great comments, and as we look at it for final design, those are things that we will be considering, and based on what you've described, it sounds like we'll be moving a little bit to the north.
Okay, well, it's good to know that you're still looking with final design, because this looks to me like it's final. Thanks.
Yeah, the graphic that he has up there showing the locations aren't, those locations aren't exact right now. They're still going to be tweaked a little bit here and there, based upon field observations and things like that, and your comment was very good.
Great, good to know, thanks.
And looking at driveways and so forth. So, so here's my, my thoughts on this. Prior to any calming here, the Speedway was predominantly Bush, because they didn't have to stop and they could round the turn at Sixth and Bush. And so there was usually more speed on Bush than Andrews. And as we do this, and we, particularly adding the extra one on Sixth, and then Bush is getting to be four speed humps, as people have said, versus currently now we have a half of a chicane and a, and a circle. So it actually, right now for me, as we look at this, now Bush becomes very, people would deter, you know, defer from Bush, because now you've got six humps to go over. The old, the old track would now have six humps that people would speed by. And then people would look more at Andrews, as you say, because now that is the easier one, with less humps in it. So here's a thought, and I just want to throw this out and think about it a little bit. The one speeds, the, the circle there at Fifth and Andrews, which has a $20,000 cost, because that's a lot more costly than a speed hump, and then accordingly, there is $7,000 cost per hump. So how about if we took out the circle and made Andrews look like Bush? And that'd be basically the same cost. So you'd add three humps to Andrews, so it'd look just like Bush, and you'd get that money from, taking out the circle, which is 20,000, so adding three humps is 21,000. And to me, it's pretty close. And then it would look the same, and then one street wouldn't look more advantageous than the other. And that way, you know, as far as deterrent or advantageous, it'd be whatever. So I'm just, just a suggestion, because like I say, whenever, whenever you change one thing, people are going to look for the advantage in another place, right? So it's just a thought. See what you think.
So, so yes, the answer, answer is yes. So we can certainly look at that. As John, I think, explained very clearly, that what you have in front of you here is based on several, several important pieces of information. Notably, the, the counters we put out there, and in addition, we received a ton of public comments. So this is, these, these locations are not made up. They're what we believe will be the most effective solution. That being said, we also committed, as I've mentioned, to working with this community, and we are committed to listening to the community. So that's certainly something we can look at. I'm reluctant to vary, very much from this proposal, because it does reflect a lot of work on our part and a lot of data that we've collected. That being said, I think what we're talking about, specific to Andrews, is fairly minor in nature, and something we can certainly take a second look at.
And, and my reason for doing that is, I think, from the pilot to this plan, you actually changed Bush quite a bit. Because right now, if you drive Bush, you have three speed humps. After this plan, you have six. That's, that's changing the picture quite a bit on those traveling that Sixth-Bush route.
There's only four on Bush.
Well, the Sixth-Bush route, I'm talking about the whole thing. So you go from, because you, you've taken out a chicane and a, and a circle, and you added one speed hump on Six. So, so then you, like I say, so those travel, trying to cut, you know, cut through that Six through Bush, goes from three speed humps to six, which is significant change. And, and I know we're, we've got some data on, on what happens, and I think the addition to the extra speed hump on Six is very good, and the other couple additional ones is very good. But it does change the, the flavor of things, and as I look at this longer, you do see that, all of a sudden, from an advent, you know, an advantage standpoint, someone trying to get speed or going through there, that Andrews will now, would now become the default, because Alder has three, and you're going out of the way north also, if you're trying to cut through to the South. So I, I guess I just want to bring that up as a thought, to, to look at that, because that's kind of the design on, on Bush, and Bush and Andrews have a lot of similarity in, in that, once you start putting those devices in.
So, as I said, we'll look at it. I don't think this, at this point, it's not necessarily about the cost, but it is about provide, our, our primary goal here is to provide an effective traffic calming solution to Old Town. And what we have in front of you is, is that. Now, as I mentioned a minute ago, that's not to say that we haven't heard the comments tonight, and both from council and the community. So as specifically, especially directed at Andrews, so that's, as I mentioned, that's something we will take a second look at.
I wanted to follow up on Bill's question. So that, if you're done, Bill?
Yeah, go ahead.
The, so on Andrews, where you're proposing the circle, there must, is there a reason that you proposed a circle there? I agree that I'd not, I mean, it's $10,000, $20,000. I mean, given the monies that we decide to spend, this is, this is not, this is not a heartburn, whether you add a couple here or take one out or whatever. So why the traffic circle there? Why, I mean, has got to be a reason that you proposed it?
Yes, so the reasoning was that we wanted to be able to calm all four legs of that intersection with one device, whereas if we were just going with speed humps, then we would have needed four of those, and I wanted to try and simplify it. There's also a downside to the more devices that you install, that it becomes harder for maintenance, it becomes harder for the fire department to respond to emergencies. And so we're trying to find the balance between reducing the cut-through traffic, reducing the speeds, and not making it so, it's too difficult to maintain the streets, and making it so that the emergency vehicles can arrive on time.
Okay, thank you.
I have another question about the proposed one speed hump on Andrews Street. It's currently, that's where the chicanes are. And so I'm wondering, because it seemed to me like you need more space for the driver. If the driver is turning onto that street, you need more space to respond and go around the chicane, versus if you had the speed hump, you could put those closer to the intersection because you need less time to put on the brakes for that, versus actually like approaching and turning around a chicane. So I wonder about, in terms of if it were, it's already proposed to be a speed hump instead of the chicane, but with that, it seems to me that it could open up options, and we don't currently have any data about speed humps in that area, since it was always the chicane. It just seems to me that potentially that opens up the options, that you could move the hump, the speed hump to a different location. So, is that all, is that all true?
So, so as I, as I mentioned, we were, I think we're hearing the, the comments on Andrews, and you're absolutely right, the chicane was out there and was effective for speed control, and not so effective to, for the neighbors. Removing the chicane and replacing it with a speed hump there has, has the same impacts. And like I said a moment ago, does it make sense to add a second, perhaps, speed hump to Andrews, based on what we've heard? It's something we'll definitely look at, and when this comes back to council for recommendation. It, it may look slightly different from what you see up here, and we'll be able to hopefully have a good discussion about why, what we have, show you at full council may be slightly different from this. Again, I just want to be really clear, the, the goal is unchanged, that maybe the details and the specifics may vary a bit, but our goal has always been to effectively reduce the speeds in Old Town, so leave it at that.
Further discussion?
Go ahead. Okay. Well, I have a, I have some concern about the alleys, the proposal about how to monitor alleys. So I understand that there aren't as many cars going through the alleys as on the main streets, but I think it's still, there is still evidence from what was collected that people are using the alleys in a way they weren't designed, they aren't designed to be used, and potentially unsafe speeds in the alleys. So I, and I think also, I don't see very much difference in the proposal from what the neighborhood is probably doing already, in terms of if we're asking them to just kind of keep an eye on the alleys. And it's, it just, to me, it seems like if people are driving 25 miles per hour in the alley, and we don't really know if it's only a handful, or if it's just some, a smaller amount of cut-through traffic, it seems to me that we need a better solution for addressing that. I don't, I don't see the evidence here that this is going to improve much from the status quo, which is people speeding in the alleys. It seems, it seems to me that we have these devices that we can move around, and maybe trying some devices, or trying to get, there is also the suggestion from the public about the signs about speed limits in the alleys, something else.
Totally agree with the alley, the concerns about the alleys. I, I think, so one thing we've heard over the last couple of years is, that concerns me, and I've been, you know, vocal about it, so this isn't anything new, is that asking our citizens to police bad behavior, I think, in large part is inappropriate. I think the residents have, one of the comments tonight was right on, I think that's potentially unsafe. It increases the potential for conflicts, not at the right, when it's happening, but between neighbors. And I think that we have enforcement powers for that reason. I think it's the responsibility of the city to help enforce our laws. I think there are some ways that we, if the speed in the alleys is the same as the streets, then I think we should look at our code and see if we need to do something different with our code. And I agree that there may be other ways that we can address speeding in alleys. I don't know what that is. I don't know if it's devices, but maybe other communities are, you know, we're turning into a denser area, but there are other places in the country that are, have already been very dense for a long time. So this can't be inventing the wheel. So I think we need to focus on the problems that we still are going to have with alleys, and there could be more speeding in the alleys if people off streets. But overall, very supportive. The traffic calming debate in this community has gone on much longer than 17 or 18 years. It goes back to the 90s and fighting, you know, over on the, on the firsts, the first street, first place, fighting about that over there. Then no left-turn signs were a huge fight. I think it is long, 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 long overdue, and I thank the residents for their patience, and I'm going to be supporting, recommending to the full council that we adopt this proposal. And I'm also going to look for additional speed hump on Andrews, or some sort of a recommendation from staff. Not sure, I'm comfortable with removing a circle, because it has a different purpose from what I'm hearing from you. And I'm not concerned about $10,000. The fund has $1.26 million in it. We've been collecting traffic ticket fees for years and years and years, and it's this
Well, so in general?
Yeah. Finalize.
Okay, my final, my final thought is that I think there is really good evidence that these devices do reduce speeds and volumes, so I think we kind of have been focusing on, or at least I have focused on my questions and concerns, but I think overall, it seems in the data, there's this trend. and concerns, but I think overall it seems in the data, there's this trend that it is reducing speeds. So that is a good thing. The other thing I wanted to just touch on is I think that the traffic circle, because it is efficient in that it slows down traffic from all the directions of that intersection, I think it makes sense to keep it in the plan. But I did hear a lot about Andrews and it seems to me that that could be two there. And then lastly, on the next steps and using these devices around town, I just wanted to say again that I think there is a lot of places around town that are interested in trying out devices. So I'm glad that these devices can be used again and tried around, tried out at different places. And I hope to see more of this and it seems like this is good lessons learned and I'd like to see it applied elsewhere.
So yes, I want this to go forward as well. My concern on the alleys is you're saying that alley speed is 25 miles an hour and I guess I didn't read the book close enough because where I grew up and learned the street laws, alley speeds were 15 miles an hour, not 25 as a street because by definition they're an alley, not a street. So I think we need to do, look at that as a code change because that's, I mean, yeah, 25 is too fast in an alley that's truly a single car wide. So I would like to propose to look at that in the future as soon as we can. And yeah, and then with the suggestions and stuff to look at some changes here as we look at Andrews when it comes back to full council to take all these comments in and consider them as well. So we don't, and the concept I have is don't, you know, don't leave one street looking as an advantage over another because of lack of or addition, you know, more numbers of devices. They should look like none of these streets are an advantage to going through. And then with the, and look at those change of when you, when you've added devices, which is a good thing, that does also shift that flow, the data might have shifted a little bit if these other devices were in. So just consider that as you look in that and before you bring it back to council. Okay? So I say we take a vote on moving this to council with staff, with direction to staff to look at this a little closer and make maybe some modification before it comes back.
I was just going to ask, I think for me, I would like to know more your thoughts on the alleys and what could be done differently than what's in the proposal because I still have concerns about the approach in the proposal or in the memo.
Yeah, so we probably should make a formal motion just so we know what we're specifically recommending to council. So make a motion to recommend that the full council adopt the proposed layout with additional consideration for, well, sorry, with the possibility of an additional speed hump on Andrews, given the comments that we heard. And also some feedback from staff about what we might look to do regarding the speeding in alleys. Okay?
Okay. Good?
Yeah.
All three in agreement on that?
Yes.
Three to, three to o vote on that. Claire? All right, super. Thank you very much and thank you all for coming. I hope, and thank you for your input. And just the other comment, one of the reasons why we want to, from discussions, trying to move this along so we can get this implemented, whatever we do, you know, before fall, you know, is one of the goals here. So you know, timing wise, that's why we're kind of pushing it here, otherwise we get out of the construction season and it turns into winter. So we are trying to move that along as quickly as possible, right, to get a contract in place and everything. So just a little added information.
May I get some clarification here?
Yes.
On the motion? When you say feedback on what can occur on the alleys, is the intent that we are going to do something on the alleys then?
So thanks for asking for clarification. I, my intent was just maybe you could give council some ideas on potential next steps. So is the next step, we need to study it, is the next step? You've heard there are issues.
Right.
Speeding, it's not going to get any better. And so I think what the committee is asking is for you all to think about that a little more and maybe have a little bit more than just, we're not thinking about alleys right now. I think that was a concern, other than people talking to speeders, which I think we had concerns with. So I don't think we have any, I think we just want a little bit more from staff about what, how you, what you think we should do next about that because it's obviously an issue.
Got it. And then just-
Is that right, Bill? Is that what you-
Yeah, that's what I get. It doesn't have to be included to my mind with this package. We want to get this thing moving along, but how we're going to, we don't want to let that just drop. We want to, we want to continue that conversation.
No, I think you're right. And I think it wasn't intended to be so that we could have an add-on motion. It was intended, because there are going to be more questions at the full council. It's just we thought that the alley discussion was incomplete because we don't, it's not addressed. It's just, it's an issue, it's not addressed. It's an open issue, so let's have some dialogue at the full council level. So maybe we know what we might do next and either the administration will decide to do something or the council may decide to direct the administration to do something or not, but I think we just need a little more information.
Is that clear enough?
Well, let me, let me, yes, I think, let me try to summarize what we just heard. So move forward with this proposal, take this to full council, look at Andrews Street for opportunities with some additional devices and council's looking for staff's recommendation on alleys, whether that's lowering the speed limit, some other kind of device that might be effective, those kinds of things.
Yeah.
Evaluating how we could effectively mitigate speeds in the alley. You'd like to hear from us what that might look like.
That's my, that was my intent. But Vicky may have a different.
And then, yeah, so next step.
Yeah, I think that intent is true. I just wanted to clarify too that I think it's, in the proposal, it isn't actually recommending nothing. It's recommending this program where the residents will notify the city and the city staff will send letters. It to me sounds like a lot of, potentially a lot of work, a lot of time on behalf of the city and on behalf of the staff. And to me, it does not seem like the best solution. So I think, I think it isn't, my concern isn't that there's nothing about it being done. My concern is that I don't think this solution is going to work.
I would, I would agree with that character.
Clear, clear enough to staff?
One more clarification.
Okay.
The motion didn't include the authorization for the finance director to include funding in a subsequent budget amendment for this work. I know we don't know the exact dollars because we're coming back with something, but do you want to have something in the motion that is generic enough that says something like, "and directing the finance director to include funding, you know, for implementing permanent traffic calming devices?" We'll come back with the funding changes at the point.
Great. Thank you for clarification.
Yeah, thanks.
All right? All right. This item is done for tonight.
That's obviously very good business.
Yeah, obviously. All right. Thank you all again for coming. All right. Second item on the agenda is AB 7637 per and polyfluoroalkylate substance PFAS pilot study funding request. I believe Sheldon, you have a presentation for us on this?
I don't have a PowerPoint, but I do have some information that I would like to share with you guys. You guys may recall, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through a little brief history, how we got to where we are, and then a brief synopsis of the agenda bill. PFAS compounds were discovered in the Isaguá Valley aquifer back in 2015 in the fall. Since then, the city's been treating the water in Well 4 where it was identified so that we can continue to use that for water supply. And with that treatment, all the PFAS has been removed out of the water before it enters the system. Investigation results have shown that the use of firefighting foam in the valley may have been a contributing source for the presence of the per and polyfluoroalkyl substances, PFAS, thank you, in the aquifer. There's little information to date related to the characterization of the extent of this in the areas where the foam was used. And the city's been working over the past two and a half years to develop a partnership with Eastside Fire and Rescue and Ecology to further characterize these compounds and provide technical data to Ecology for their efforts to develop regulations related to these compounds. The city lobbied this past sessions and received further financial support from the State Department of Commerce, which the city council took action on a commerce grant agreement at their last meeting. This agenda bill is a request for additional allocation of city water utility money to help pay for the city's share of the studies and other activities legal as well as our assistance for hydrogeologists. Currently, we have $65,000 in the budget. This request is to add $80,000 to that $65,000 for a total of $145,000 expenditure in 2018. We've been working with the partners to develop the field scope of work as well as its cost, as well as we've been drafting partnership agreements for how we're going to share these costs, how we're going to manage together and things like that. Legal services and hydrogeologist services have been employed on behalf of the city to review and draft multi-party agreements and to ensure the appropriate scope of field work is identified and costed out. It is expected that the city's local share, i.e. the water utility money, in addition to the Department of Commerce grant, which you guys already took action on, will increase by approximately the $80,000. That's the estimate that we have now. And so to repeat again, the request would increase the total city water fund commitment to $145,000 in 2018. Pending the results of the study and things like that, there may be an additional budget request for 2019 associated with further work with this effort. So the agenda bill is requesting and recommends that the council direct the finance director to include an additional $80,000 of expenditure from the water fund for purposes of completing the field studies and legal and hydrogeologist support associated with the PFAS characterization work in 2018. If there's any questions, I'm happy to respond.
I, I understand that there may be an additional ask in 2019 and so I wondered if that is associated with actually treatment or do you think that that could be another study? How definitive do we expect this study to be in terms of understanding the problem?
This study will likely get us a long way there to characterizing what the problem is and the potential source characterization. It's hard to tell exactly because under the ground is not hetero, is not homogeneous and isotropic. So there's a lot of variables and we're only getting points of information at our sampling spots. So there could be additional questions that need to be further fleshed out in 2019. Our hope is that we're doing a very thorough characterization now, but you know, there could be things that we see that are missing. We may discover some things we didn't know. So it's hard for me to answer that question definitively. Sorry.
Yeah, thanks.
And then just to comment from our previous council work, this is, there's a lot of money coming from other sources, other partners that we're working on with this. And so there's a lot more money than this being put in there from all our partners as well as some grants.
That's correct. We have the Department of Commerce grant, $200,000. Eastside Fire and Rescue is going to put in an equal amount that what the city is putting in. And Ecology has put in an additional $50,000. So yes, there is a lot of money coming from a lot of different people.
Any other questions?
I don't know that we have a, I mean, I don't, I don't know that we have much of a choice but to pay for what we need to pay for to study it and get the information that we need. Helping, we're also helping, Ecology is helping us and we're in turn helping them. And so I think it's a wise investment for, investment's not the right word, expenditure. It's necessary and wise. And I, the only thing I would ask just for the folks who might be watching this is to explain specifically what the goal is working with Ecology because I think, I think we have to be accurate about how we characterize it so people understand exactly what the goal is with Ecology.
The goal with Ecology is they're looking for information related to the compounds in the groundwater as well as the soil, vetos zones and the like, so that they can begin to understand how best to regulate the substance and begin to understand how to set regulatory cleanup levels and things like that from a statewide perspective. This is a, I'll call it an up and coming-
Emerging issue.
Issue that is, emerging issue, thank you, that is statewide. We already have heard of a number of places throughout the state. There's likely going to be more that are going to show up as well. So this is not just going to help the area of Isaguá, but it's a statewide help as well.
And because we're, we're willing to partner with Ecology to help them learn in Isaguá, they're in turn helping us by providing funds for those-
That's correct.
The studies. So yeah, I'm, I'll support it. I support this.
I had a question related to the emerging issue statement. It's an emerging issue, but it's also the chemicals that were used for firefighting, which was one of the main sources of the original problem. Those are phased out at this point. Is that correct?
Firefighting foam still exists, however, regulations changed on how that foam is made so that back, I think it was 2000, 2001, the regulations changed so that they cannot put the perfluoroalkyl chemicals in the foam anymore. They had to change the components, the compounds contained within the firefighting foam.
Okay, so it's an emerging issue just as people, or as cities discover it, that it is a problem, but on the sort of source side, it is also being dealt with in a different way now?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you for clarifying that.
All right. Any other discussion?
I'm in support.
Everybody's in support. I think this is like, as you say, we don't have a lot of choices here. We have this, we're one of the leaders on this, we need to fund this. Is this okay on consent calendar for everybody?
It is for me.
Yep, okay. Consent it is.
Thank you.
When? Do you need us to tell you when or does it say?
It's going to return on the next council meeting. Agenda bill will be updated and put in the packet tomorrow morning.
And both of these will be, right? The next council meeting?
That's correct. Next council meeting, you'll see them both.
Yep, okay. So that concludes our big action items. Now we have project updates. Any highlights you want to share with us this time, this week, this month, I guess?
Yes. I've got one item that's not on the list that is just coming up, I want to give you guys an update on. And then obviously the Pickering Trail opened today. So it is open, people have been using it and according to the texts I've received from the field, they're enjoying it. So it's, it's really nice. You guys ought to walk it, ride it, whatever.
So one question-
Just don't drive it.
How did they cross the piece of new construction that's totally finished where, you know, we cross this to the north there by, on 62nd and it crosses?
Oh, on the west side?
Yeah.
It goes under the bridge.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, because the bridge is still under construction.
Right, okay.
So when you do cross under there, you'll actually see that they still have scaffolding and things like that because they're still working on top of the area. So, and they're still doing some utility work underneath.
Pete, walkers and bikes really appreciate that, I know.
Yeah. And then I wanted to let you guys know, there was earlier this year, and actually it was latter part of last year, but we got the analysis done this year. FHWA changed the way that they require the load ratings, load calculations on our bridges. And this isn't just Isaguá's bridges, it's everybody's bridges. And they required analysis on certain bridges that met certain conditions. And we have the Culvert slash Bridge on Newport Way that crosses Tibbetts Creek. the culvert slash bridge on Newport Way that crosses Tibbetts Creek just east, just west of SR 900 to where we have to do some reinforcement to it. And so we're currently preparing an agenda bill to request funds to do that because otherwise we have to post it for load restrictions, and that will affect our snowplow operations, our stormwater operations, it affects fire department garbage. So we want to get those repairs done this year before the wet seasons come about and the risk of, you know, snow and things like that so we don't affect our public operations and can keep service going. So I want to let you guys know that's an upcoming agenda bill that's, will come with a referral to committee on July 16.
What is the anticipated traffic impact for that project?
The expectation is that there won't be any traffic impact. All the work will be done on the underside, on the underside of the top of the culvert. So it'll be from inside out.
So there won't be like trucks there that-
There may be some parked service vehicles on the side or something like that, but there shouldn't be anything affecting traffic.
How long does it take?
I don't have an answer for how long it takes. I've just been in conversation with the consultants on what the design may be like.
Okay, I'm only thinking because that's in an area where there's a lot of construction.
Correct.
And so-
Yeah.
If there is some additional traffic impact, we're going to hear about it.
Yeah, the goal was no traffic impact if we could do it, and there were two options. One of them had work on the top surface, which would have been major traffic impact, and the other one was underneath.
Okay.
And so we're looking to do the underneath one. So that's the up and coming one or emerging issue. And then I believe there were some questions that council member Hunt sent. Let me pull up her questions real quick. If you don't mind, I can just go right to your email. So you had a question that you emailed earlier today about the SPAR pump station reservoir transmission main project, and the note that says we're negotiating with WashDOT for property purchase and a DSD variance. Yes, we are in the process of agreeing to a price for the purchase of the land. And then the variance is regarding a buffer reduction for wetlands associated with our access road that gets up to the property, which is ironic because the access road already exists because it was a haul road used by WashDOT. So it's, you know, we're just going on top of what's already there pretty much. So that's what those were.
Okay, so, so that I understand, so the variance is to use an existing road that was used by WashDOT now as, as a road, but because it's close to a wetland, you need the variance?
It goes through the buffer of a wetland, so we need to, we basically need a variance to impact the buffer, which is, it's ironic because the haul road already exists. It's a gravel road that goes up there.
Not grandfathered or something?
It's not our road.
Not according to our codes. It's not grandfathered, but-
Okay. So it sounds like in that, in your estimation, it's not a substantial variance, it's replacing a road with a roof.
No, it's not a substantial variance.
Okay.
I'll just continue, okay? You had a question regarding the Sunrise Place drainage stabilization, and there was a statement in the updates talking about a possible rerouting of the stream in the past, but now we're beginning design. There wasn't any explanation of what begin design meant, and you were asking for clarification on what it was. We're not rerouting the stream. The previous design was actually to tightline a majority of the stream and move it, and then control the discharge at another location. But in conversation with WDFW, we're actually going to end up using large wady debris and boulders and things like that to stabilize, more natural stabilization. So that's what we're in the process of beginning the design on. There was a question regarding the comment in the environmental mitigation site monitoring and maintenance about 2018 budget's not adequate. I apologize, we should have had a little more clarification on that. We've noted that when we've gone in to start the monitoring and maintenance on our sites this year, we've noted that some of the sites have been degrading more than what we anticipated. And so there's an additional request to fund maintenance and so forth associated with the sites. These sites, the monitoring and maintenance are mitigation sites that projects have done in the past, and we have permit conditions to monitor and maintenance and do the appropriate maintenance to make sure we continue to meet permit conditions.
So these are, these are mitigation sites from different developments that they-
Not developments, city projects.
City projects, okay. And the-
I can give you some examples. Some examples are Fourth Avenue, East Lake, some Amish Parkway, the trail project that we built at SR 900. All those, we had to go and build wetlands in certain locations.
Okay, and then what's the scope of the, the budget shortfall for the 2018 budget?
If my memory serves me, it's about $50,000. It's stormwater money, and it is currently planned to be within the budget amendment that's going to be forthcoming to the council in July.
Is that all of them?
No, she had a couple more questions.
Okay, go.
I'm just rolling through, I'm sorry.
It was a long pass.
Shangala Talis Drive reconstruction, question about the irrigation landscaping by late June. The contractor's actively working it now. They're going to continue through next week. The hope is finish by the end of next week, but it may roll into the first week of July, but it's, it's being worked on. And then Isaguá Highlands traffic calming under the current says install custom no parking signs. I'm going to let Mr. Seaman respond.
We're planning to install those signs here in the next several weeks. Currently, our plan is to not paint the curb. That's, our practice has been to not do that and to use signs which we, which will be an effective deterrent to parking. It's something we're, it's something that comes up a lot, the striping the curbs, and it's, we haven't found it to be that effective. It's a lot more maintenance for our crews. Every, doesn't sound like much for any one curb, but when you start adding things up, it becomes a, a lot more painting for them to do. It's an, as I said, it's an ongoing conversation, and so we're certainly continuing that. But our plan specifically for the Highlands, specifically for those no parking zones, is signs at this time.
And that, that includes parking by hydrant, fire hydrants?
Yes.
Okay. And did you say that you have found that to be effective in other parts of the city?
We've, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a combination of a lot of things. It's a combination of, of awareness and respect for parking. It's, it's not just fire, it's not just fire hydrants, it's too close to the curb, it's adjacent to people's driveways, and it's, our primary line of attack has been signage, not park, not painting, as I mentioned, for the reasons I mentioned. But, you know, further discussion for sure, and we're not closing that, not, not closing that conversation. It's just at this, at this time, that is our practice.
Thank you. That includes them? Okay.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
So the, the big project that's going on, it's supposed to be open by the end of the year? Can you give us an update?
Which projects then? Yeah, southeast 62nd? I knew what you were talking about. Yes, project's going well. We've currently requested, we did an agreement with the Spanish Plateau Water and Sewer District last year that required us to replace their sewer that was underneath our preload fills in 221st. The monitoring, the data that we did during the timeframe of the preload indicated that no movement had occurred. So we gained permission to access their sewer, and we did a very substantial inspection of the sewer about a week and a half ago. And that came back, the pipe's in really good condition, so the city has formally requested the district to consider not requiring us to replace that sewer. That is about a $360,000 item that we were going to split the cost with them, 50/50. The risk with that is, is that the soils are very soft, deep excavation, groundwater, and the likelihood that they would end up with something better, probably not going to happen because of the difficulty in building it. So what they have is really good. It's airtight, it passed all the air pressure tests, things like that, held it, didn't even leak any, which is surprising, because most sewers have some leakage in their air pressure tests, but nothing. It held firmly the whole time. So we will hear back probably the first week of July from the district on what, you know, whether or not they're going to say, yeah, we don't have to replace it. Replacing that sewer is a critical path item on the construction and probably the highest risk item we have left on the project. But other than that, the project's going very well. It will open by the end of the year.
Include everything? All right. With that then, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.